I'd like to call this meeting to order. Ms. Byron, may I have roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson.
Here.
Mrs. Dawson. Mrs. Harrington.
Here.
Mrs. Quinter.
Here.
Mr. Rickett.
Here.
Madam Chair, the clerk certifies the presence of decorum.
May I stand for the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
May I have a motion?
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
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 All right, moving on.
I apologize, Madam Chair, I would like to request we remove number 8A until next week, or the next board meeting.
Say which one again?
Board member items 8A, policy DJR, JFC, R, and resolution.
Thank you.
May I have a motion?
Sorry, may I move to approve the agenda as amended?
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, moving on to public comment. I will open public comment. Ms. Byron, do we have any speakers for this evening?
Yes, we have three this evening.
Did we do consent?
It's not on the list.
Did you want to do consent now, or just get, or we could do that after public comment, whatever?
Oh, I have it as number three, is it in my row?
I've got different item numbers too. That's why I'm so confused.
I'm sorry, it's my fault, I thought I'd gotten the right one.
Did I rearrange?
No, I don't think you did, I think I messed up.
Well, I had originally taken out recognitions and then I put them back, so it's possible that...
Nope, you're right, I printed the one out, so we're good.
Okay.
All right, we'll go from there. Sorry, thank you, Miss Harrington. Consent agenda, minutes and financial reports.
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as the whole, including items 2A and 2B.
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Thank you. All right, now, I will move on to public comment. We have three speakers. Before we get started, the Orange County School Board recognizes the importance of maintaining a respectful and orderly environment during school board meetings. Therefore, we kindly request that all comments made be, are relevant to the field of pre-K through 12 public education and pertain to the matters concerning the school board and division. We ask that individuals refrain from using offensive language, engaging in vulgar or profane behavior, or making comments or taking actions that may incite violence or disrupt the peace. Unless otherwise authorized by the Chair, each speaker is allotted a maximum of three minutes to express their views, to uphold decorum. We also kindly request that applause, noise-making, or any other disruptive behavior be avoided before, during, and after a member of the public addresses the board. It is important to note that the public comment is intended for addressing the school board and therefore comments should be directed solely toward the board members. Furthermore, it is expected that board members will refrain from engaging in dialogue with the speakers during this time as it is an opportunity for the board to actively listen to the thoughts, concerns, and feedback of the public. Any conduct that violates the established decorum and order as determined by the Chair or their designee may result in disciplinary action, including potential expulsion from the meeting. Alternatively, written comments may be submitted to the board via email. It is crucial to emphasize that these guidelines are not intended to restrict freedom of speech, but rather to ensure effective communication between the public and their public servants. We eagerly anticipate your valuable contributions and feedback. Thank you. Ms. Byron?
Our first speaker is Alyssa Waller.
Good evening, School Board Chair and all in attendance. I want to share an excerpt from a Facebook post from the mother of a former Orange County public school student with her permission. The school year of 2022-2023, DeNoah went to preschool at Prospect. He had a very rough year, serious behavioral issues, not paying attention, mean to his teachers and other stu-, other kids. The teachers told me that they suspected he may be on the spectrum. So like any other caring mother, I had him tested. Results came back that he wasn't. Then I was told ADHD. Back for more tests? Nope, not that either. I talked to my son, he admitted to 98% of what I was told he was doing. I disciplined him and took things away, no change. I asked why was he doing these things? And he always had an answer that was either someone did something to him, or he just thought about doing something that he did, did it. He knew these things were wrong but did them anyway. I had men that he looked up to, talked to him, even let him stay with them some weekends for God time. The craziest thing is, he wasn't showing these habits at home. Now, I'm not saying he was an angel, but he would be, do normal hard-headed four-year-old boy stuff. The stuff he was doing at school were baby kid's stuff, if you know, you know. I was getting calls and notes every week, sometimes even early pickups. About two weeks before school was over, my four-year-old son told me that he wanted to be white. My heart dropped. I calmly asked why. He said, because the teachers listened to the white kids but not the brown kids. They don't believe me when I say someone did something bad to me, but I always get in trouble. I knew right then there, there that was, he was acting out so his teachers would pay attention to him. There was no way that a four-year-old should ever be able to understand or comprehend that his skin color gets him treated differently. Of course, I had a whole meeting that following week with his teachers, principal, and other administrators, but of course I got, oh no, we would never. Over that summer, my brother and sister-in-law asked me if he could try camp there for about a month. I agreed, he needed to be around more boys, and I know he would be loved and well-taken care of. Plus, I was back and forth. When he went to the camp the first day, there was a whole rainbow coalition of kids there, thank God. We wouldn't feel, he wouldn't feel singled out. Do you know, we got not one bad report the whole time he was there? After seeing that, my brother and sister-in-law came to me again, and they asked could DeNoah come live with them and try their school in DC for a year? Of course, I wasn't happy, not my baby, not my one and only. I talked, I cried, I prayed, and I prayed so much for the right answer. God gave me my answer. I broke my own heart by sending my, him up there, but I had to take a chance. It was one of the best decisions I ever made. DeNoah just graduated from kindergarten with an AB honor roll. He's flourishing greatly. Could not ask for a better staff of school who actually care about their students. Bernard Elementary is one of the best charter schools in DC. He still has some behavioral issues, but nothing beyond what a normal six-year-old would be doing. They listen and care and teach. I firmly believe we have excellent teachers at staff at Orange County Public Schools, but I also know from my own personal experiences that these types of cases happen too often over the years. Although the staff may not believe any biases were shown...
Madam Chair, I would like to request, since we have such a short list tonight, that we allow Ms. Waller to finish.
Thank you, I promise it's not much longer, I promise.
Sure, that's fine.
Although the staff may not believe any biases were shown, we all have some implicit bias. Under implicit bias, we are unaware that our biases, rather than obje-, objective facts, affect our decisions and judgments. I'm asking you, when students and parents come to you with these cases similar to the post, staff should begin reflecting on the possibility implicit bias may be present and how it can be corrected. There are free implicit bias testing, and I encourage you all to take, and I'm sure you will find out things about yourself just like I have about myself. As an example, I even had implicit bias on my own race. You can also re-, research implicit bias trainings if you care to improve yourself like I did as well. Thank you all for listening.
The next speaker is Tiffany Conway.
Good evening, members, good evening, audience. And my name is Tiffany, I am the mother. I'm sorry, you really... Ooh, you touched me, I'm so sorry. And, you're not alone. So I am a mama of Adeline, who is nine, and Solomon, who is six. They are supposed to be rising fourth, and first graders at Gordon Barber. I am here this evening because several school employees are in violation of one of the codes of the policy. I have spent several days researching, I've brought copies for you guys as well. What I'm referring to is code J E C A, Admission of Homeless Children. The first paragraph states, "The Orange County School Board is committed to educating homeless children and youth." I won't read the rest, you guys know what it says. Directly underneath of that, it says, "The Orange County School Division serves each homeless student according to the student's best interests and will continue the student's education in the school of origin for the demerition of homelessness." It is here in black and white in the code. So, the reason I am standing before you is because on Wednesday, I have endured quite a bit of harassment from several people because I am currently homeless. My children are currently homeless, unfortunately. For the last 11 months, we have been utilizing hotels. We have utilized my stepdad when needed, we have used a camper. Unfortunately, that camper was taken away from us, and we have done a little bit of camping. But, I have been very honest with the school. My children were in attendance at Gordon Barber, I have been in contact with Ms. Boone. I recently only had one conversation with Ms. Ailer. Throughout all of this conversation, it has been continuously drilled into me that we are not eligible under McKinnney-Vento any longer, that there is a timeframe, a timeline in place, that we are not eligible for my kids to come back to school because we've been homeless long enough, and it's only for one year. I contacted Patricia Pop, she is the state coordinator, because Ms. Boone swore up and down to me, Ms. Ailer swore up and down to me, it is in licensing that they are only eligible for one year and that they cannot reapply. She said absolutely not, there is no Virginia license, that only gives one year. She said, the only requirement, for lack of better word, is that you do have to reapply. You have to fill out the form for McKinnney. I asked that question several times of Ms. Boone and Ms. Schumake, who is the active principal at Gordon Barber, and they said, no, you can't reapply. Your situation was only current for the one academic year, so we have to have an address. The other thing that I addressed with Dr. Pop this morning on a phone call was the form, the notarized form. I have been a school parent in Orange County for 13 years. I fully understand the forms, I understand the need for forms. But, when a parent comes to you and says, "If we give you an address, if we tell you where we're staying, it puts our children at risk", we should not continue to be harassed to sign a form that's going to put us at risk, which it ended up doing anyways. I would like to see a clarification, and I would like to see a change, and I would like to not have our homeless community be harassed over something as simple as a children's education. When they are good students, they haven't caused a whole lot of issue in their time at Gordon Barber, they have had good grades, they have had good test scores. I have been overall cooperative with every aspect of this. I've been very honest with my story from the beginning with all of the staff. Because of the actions of the school employees, because of all of the harassment, Wendy Boone felt it was appropriate to reach out to social services. I'm now fighting to get my children back because Thursday morning, they removed my children from my custody because of the situation. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
And our final speaker tonight is Steve Irving.
Good evening. I brought my son with me, he's the one that's smart and knows what he's doing on this one. Executive Order 33, I've spoken to a few of you about this. I, I don't disagree that cellphones do not need to be in the classroom. They need to be in the backpack, they don't need to be in their hands during class. The teachers need the ability to teach. My issue is the safety for my son. He's mine, I need to know he's safe. I know you guys worry about the entire county, all of the kids. He's what I worry about. I need to know he's safe. I need to be able to contact him in a time of emergency. So, he took it upon himself, and I didn't know he did this until the beginning of school, he set a focus on his phone to where he can only be contacted by text message from four people, was it four?
Five.
Five people. And he can actually step up here and show you how he does it. And the only way he's contacted is through text message to his watch. And if he needs to call 911, he also altered his watch to do the quiet 911 in case they're in a corner during a code red, where he can quietly call 911, so that way, if there's someone outside his door, they can't hear the "marr, marr", you know, you, I'm sure everyone's accidentally called 911 on your cellphone. So, he set it up to the push button, where he slides it, and it instantly calls 911. He knows what he's doing. I know the guidelines, y'all are still working through them. The other issue I have is the false information that was provided by the Prospect Principal and also by Locust Grove Elementary on Facebook. They said it was law, it's not law. It's an executive order that's still being processed through, and it comes into effect January 1st, September 16th. Policy's supposed to be on guideline online. I don't like half-truths, I don't like being lied to by the people who are over top of my child, for one thing. Tell the truth, say this is the policy, we're working through it, right now this is what we're doing. But his safety is my importance. I need to know he's safe. And if his phone is off, I can't see where he's at in the building, I cannot contact him. Because I can simply send him a text message, say, "Are you all right?", he can say yes. Write back to me, to my wife, to my mother, and to my sister, and to his other grandparents, who are his points of contact. So, if you let, he actually took me off of the people to contact, and we will demonstrate, if you're not on the list...
Your call has been forwarded to voicemail.
It goes to voicemail. And when he turns the focus off at 3 o'clock, or was it 2:35? 2:35 it ends. When he turns the focus off, he gets all the notifications from the day throughout school that he didn't get during school. So, I know you're working on the policy, but you understand that we as parents need to know that our children are safe. And his phone turned off in his backpack, it's not going to happen. He's not going to do it. I need to be able to contact him to know my child is safe. Because if you can tell me, a couple more seconds, if you can tell me there's not going to be any more code reds, we'll turn it off. If you can tell me there won't be any other issues, I'll turn it off. First day of school, y'all had an accidental code red. If he was at high school, first thing I would have done is send him a text message, "Are you okay?" And he would have said, yes, from his watch. He would have never picked up his phone, he would have never gone in his backpack. He would have just went, "Yep", and nobody would have been known. So I need y'all to look at the policy and figure out, like me and Jack said, a balance. Because some kids know what they're doing, some kids are going to abuse it, and I understand that. So you got to find a way to counter that. And if there's a punishment, and I told him, I said, "If you get caught doing something you're not supposed to do it, I will discipline you, and then you'll lose that right." So, there needs to be a way to balance this out, so that way, you know, I can know as his parent that he's safe. I know you guys are trying, and everyone's focus is the safety of the kids, my focus is him. Okay? All right, thank you.
That's all.
All right, I will close public comment. And I apologize again, but I missed my, I don't know why, but I printed it out. So I have recognitions, sorry. I'll feed to you, Dr. Hornick.
Yes, ma'am, so we have two this evening, and this is more of an introduction of two of our new hires. And so I will begin with Ms. White, who is here this evening with Mr. Price. And so, this is a little bit late, we wanted to make sure that we, we got this in. At the July 15th School Board Meeting, the School Board approved the appointment of Ms. Catherine White, who is before you this evening, as the newest Assistant Principal at Orange County High School. A little bit about Ms. White, she switched education from her career in environmental science, and having served as a science teacher in, as a science teacher at Jefferson County Schools in West Virginia, and then continued in that capacity in both Clark County as well as Stafford County. From there, she served as a principal intern, assistant principal, as well as the interim principal at North Stafford High School before coming to Orange County at the beginning of last school year. Ms. White graduated from Hood College with a bachelor's degree in environmental science and policy with a concentration in biology. She further earned a master's degree in environmental science from Johns Hopkins and a degree in ed administration from Shenandoah University. She enjoys spending time with her two sons and her extended family, working on ideas for her family's vineyard in Portugal, as well as boxing, so don't want to mess with her. Said Ms. White, "I'm super excited to be part of the OC admin team. I feel like I found a new home." And I can tell you, as she was previously my assistant principal at North Stafford High School, Orange County has found a very, very good assistant principal. And so we would like to take this moment to welcome Ms. Catherine White to Orange County Public Schools. And Yvonne, would you grab a, get a picture, please?
Yes.
All right, we'll come over here for the background.
Since this wasn't rec, I thought we were avoiding this part.
Yes. Holy echo.
I've got a little bit different, too.
They go right there and so, that's perfect.
Are you sure you want me to do?
Yes.
Okay.
Not a selfie, Yvonne, not a selfie.
I did, I cleaned it. Ellen told me I always have to do it like this. Okay, thank you.
And our other recognition slash welcome appointment is Ms. Lisa Frady Lawhorn, who was appointed recently as the new Chief Financial Officer here for Orange County Public Schools. Lisa has hit the ground running. She overlapped with Mr. Honnaker for two and a half weeks, maybe three weeks or so. And as of August 1st, has been, so, has been on her own as the CFO. And she has hit the ground running, bringing with her wealth of experience and expertise. Before joining Orange County Public Schools, Lisa distinguished herself in various senior financial roles in her sector, including business services analyst, advanced financial analyst, senior project accountant, lead financial specialist, finance manager, and most recently, a senior project controller. Her extensive background has equipped her with a deep understanding of finance management, as well as strategic planning. She earned a Bachelor's of Business Administration from Strayer University, and I believe all while working too, correct, Lisa? So that's a testament to your commitment to professional growth and excellence. Outside of work, she resides nearby in Culpeper with her beloved four-legged companions. We're thrilled to welcome Lisa to our team. We look forward to her leadership in steering our own financial strategy to new heights. Please join us in extending a very warm welcome to Lisi Frady Lawhorn, our new CFO.
You don't get out of the picture, though, Lisa.
I was trying. You did not warn me of this.
That's correct. That's what you're all about, is you're going to go right in the center, right there.
Sorry.
All right, so thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, that's all for recognitions. And I can move on to recommendations if you would so like.
Sure. What am I looking at?
We, we, we next those, though, correct? We have, we only have, I'm sorry, we have the one action item we are...
One action item?
Yes, to look at. And Susan, we might need your help here potentially with some of these questions. We have our one policy that we would like to bring back for this evening due to the, the timeliness and the nature of the importance of the policy J E D regarding attendance and absences, excuses, and dismissals. And so Susan, I didn't know if there was anything you needed to preface from the last time, or if we just wanted to open up for any questions or comments from board members?
The only thing we did add was, under B, letter A, in the second paragraph, it's highlighted in green, that upon the sixth absence, the principal or principal's designee will require an in-person or over-the-phone meeting. And it just specifies that that's actually when they will consider the possibility of some sort of a written plan, or an attendance plan.
And this was in response to the proposed change as far as the number of days, and we wanted to make sure that the, the provisions of the, of the new policy match the suggested change in dates.
Correct. Just so it read a little bit easier, it kind of got confused with the first paragraph, so then there were a lot of questions about, so how many absences are we talking? That's why we added that statement as a proposal, just to clarify.
Anybody have any questions?
Yes, I'm trying to identify, it looks like on policy J E D on page 3, section, or 3B, where it states upon additional absences. Is that where we were just looking at?
Where it says, the highlighted in green, where it says the, upon the sixth absence?
No, farther down. Upon additional absences, small b down.
Yes, ma'am.
I believe in there, there is, there is the one, the five absences, and then one additional day, but later in the thing, it says, excuse me, "The conference shall be held no later than..." Oh gosh, I can't even read that small.
Ten days, school days after the 10th absence of the people.
After the 10th absence, yeah, so that's what kind of threw me. Is it the sixth absence, is it the 10th absence?
Well, the sixth absence will trigger a meeting, but then as student, as a student may miss more, it's going to trigger meetings upon more absences.
So just additional meetings?
Correct.
Just an additional, okay, thank you. I was, I kept reading it back and forth and just wasn't sure if I was understanding it, which I was not, so thank you.
Yeah, this is actually really rolling chronologically through as, as an attendance issue would develop. And so that, this is kind of the next step after we have met and developed an attendance improvement plan.
Correct. And then that communication is so important because, you know, we get to the point where a student might be on an attendance plan, and then they miss more days, but, you know, maybe they had a hospitalization, maybe there was something more serious or... So that even though we've written a plan that says X may happen, well, let's consider the circumstance that you're in. Is that a realistic next step? It's not like someone was just being delinquent and not attending school. You know, maybe there were other circumstances, so it keeps that communication going between the family and the school.
Absolutely critical, so thank you again for clarifying for me, appreciate it.
Anything else?
I move to approve the policy as presented.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Susan, thanks for doing, making the adjustments.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, now we will move forward, Susan, we can get all the information out. Now, Madam Chair, if it's acceptable, we can go to recommendations.
Yes, I see it now.
Now that I'm confusing everybody, so. At this time, I'll bring Mr. Sarver forward, and we would like to make a request to seek surplus property for a vehicle. Justin, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Horneck.
Justin, before you start, super job on day one, man.
Oh, I, I can't take the credit for it this time, it's my team.
Way, way to go.
They, they really did a nice job.
I understand your day started at like 3:30 or something in the morning.
We're not going to talk about that.
Okay. But great transition gives our parents just tremendous confidence, so thank you for all your work.
But I missed your call at 4:15, I appreciated it, thanks, Justin. Awesome.
No, I have to give all the credit to our team, the, I mean, and they've, we've worked through a restructuring in the office, and, you know, we've, we've not had any, that I'm aware of, we haven't had any major issues, so I appreciate everybody's support. I'm coming this evening to ask for a declaration of surplus property for a vehicle that's developed some mechanical problems. Sometimes when you have a fleet of vehicles and you, this was an example of a COVID purchase, and it wasn't necessarily exactly what we would have purchased under normal circumstances, and it has developed a mechanical issue, ultimately, unfortunately, it's going to need an engine. And it's about an $8,000 used car, and that's about the cost of the engine, just... And that's about the cost of the engine, just doesn't make financial sense to keep it. So, we're going to keep our eyes open and see what the best way to dispose of this vehicle will be. But I just wanted to go ahead and have it declared surplus so we have the flexibility to do so when the opportunity comes.
Any questions?
Move to approve declaration of surplus property.
May I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you very much, Mr. Sarver. This time, I'll bring up Ms. Frady Lawhorn. We have a, and I guess Ms. Ayler too is available potentially for, as well, for questions. But this is a request for supplemental appropriations. Lisa, I'll turn it over to you, answer Susan.
Good evening. Yes, this is going to be a supplemental appropriation. And it is going to be in the amount of $59,107 and is to increase the revenue and expenses. And it's on the school-based mental health services grant, sorry.
And Susan, possibly some information about how we're going to spend it?
So, this, this was a grant written by Dr. Nora Brooking. And we are partnering with Incumbus, which is our local community services board. And so, what the grant will be is, we have, they've hired a crisis counselor that will only work with Orange County Public Schools, which we're super excited about. And that individual will help with risk assessments for students who are threatening self-harm, as well as then follow-up services. If students are, receive, need to receive additional treatment, that individual can help coordinate with families and parents so that the students can receive whatever community-based services and treatment are recommended. And this will greatly assist our school counselors.
And this will be at all of the schools? Every school has access?
Yes. And hopefully soon, we'll be back to ask. They've actually awarded us additional funding so that we can employ the person for an additional year, so.
You answered my question, wonderful, thank you.
Susan, terrific news, please thank Nora. You know, this one is, you know, close to my heart. So, whatever we can do to continue to support the young people with the mental health challenges that are going on in our community would be terrific, and especially if the state can help us with some more money.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you, as always.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the supplemental appropriations request in the amount of a $50,000 increase in revenue and expenses in the operational budget.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board, Lisa.
So, that was easy, wasn't it?
I was just going to say that.
Don't walk away yet, Lisa, you're still up. And so, Lisa is here again this evening to bring forward a proposal for a copier contract.
Copier lease contract.
I'll turn it over to you.
So, an RFP went out on June 6th. We had three bids that were received on June 24th. All three bids were reviewed by five individuals and analyzed using a rubric scoring. And we are proposing to go with RICO. They scored the highest. They are $700 higher than the lowest bid. But we've always, you know, we've already had that relationship. And they are in orange, so they'll be able to respond quickly.
Yes, their tech, their primary technician that takes care of us is, lives in orange. So, their response time is...
Much better.
Very good.
What is the, the lease for, for, for just one year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Move to approve, did you have another question?
Sorry, it's 60 months.
60 months.
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Did you have a question?
I don't have a question.
Oh. Move to approve as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. And finally, this evening, we have Mr. Arnold. And this is a project that we are really excited to get underway because it is good for the schools as well as for the community. As part of this project, adds pickleball courts to our lighted facility at Orange County High School that our community will be able to access. And so, Mr. Arnold, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Horneck, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is actually the second time around for the tennis courts. We had an inconsistency in the original process, so we put it back out to bid. So, we are again seeking approval of the contractor to complete the restoration of the OCHS tennis courts. I won't go through the detail. You're aware of the condition of the courts, that four of them basically are unplayable and the other two are not usable for any type of VHSL event or for, even for our students to practice. The project will include milling and disposal of the existing asphalt, grading and compaction of the existing base, placement of three inches of asphalt surfacing designed for tennis courts, coating and striping the new asphalt, and removal and replacement of the tennis nets, net posts, and all of the fencing and gates. The project also does include striping for four pickleball courts overlaid on the upper tennis court so they can be used for either. And that will provide more recreational opportunities for our students as well as the community. The low bid was again submitted by Superior Tennis Courts of Culpeper. And as a little bit of a surprise, their new bid was slightly less than their original proposal, $3,200 less. So, I again asked for the board's approval of this project so we can move forward.
Couple of questions. Lights on all of them now, is this part of the proposal, or is it just on the one?
It's only, lighting is not included, it'll be the lights that are already there.
That, that is staying?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The...
Those will be the courts that have pickleball added?
Correct.
The ones that are lit?
Will we have a form of a warranty?
Well, certainly, with all contractors, you get a one-year warranty.
Okay, so it will have a one-year warranty on there? Okay, great. Thank you, sir.
And we've used this contractor for repairs before, and they've come back after about two to three years to redo a patch that failed.
Good.
So, he has a good track record.
The community will be quite excited about pickleball.
Yes, they will.
Did we come up with regulation on how we were going to ensure that items weren't going to be misplaced or misused with the transition between tennis and pickleball? I know that came up at the last discussion and...
Were we restoring?
Yeah.
I think that was the question.
You were going to get with Marshall and work out some of the details. The nets are different between regular tennis and pickleball.
Yes, I'll get with the contractor as we move forward.
Perfect.
Make sure we have that under control.
That's an internal, an internal in-house with, with Dr. Horneck? Yes, sir?
Yes.
Right on, right on.
Any other questions?
No.
Was this on the, in the CIP?
Yes.
It is, okay. I don't have anything else.
Move to approve a ward of bid for tennis court renovations.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Mr. Arnold.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. That is all for me this evening, thank you.
All right, moving on. It's seven, right? Future agenda items. Did any board member have anything that they would like to put on the list for the next board meeting?
The transfer of 8A to the policy DJR, JFCR, and resolution.
Anything else?
That's, as well as the remaining policies, right?
Remaining policies, yeah.
Remaining. Additionally, I'd like to have a section to discuss legislative priorities. I know that's going to be coming up soon. And Sandy and I would greatly appreciate conversational pieces that we can bring to our legislators.
Can we make that part of our, I'll, I'll say retreat, right?
We'll find out.
Can we make that a part of that so we can get a little bit more detail about some of the ideas that you all have?
I'd be good with that if we're allowed, or if able, yeah.
Absolutely, yeah.
Did you have anything?
I, yes, ma'am, thank you, I do. Just trying to recognize the beginning of the school year and thank some of the community and staff members. And so, this is part of a letter that I will be putting into the Lake of the Woods Lake Currents, but I just wanted to read it briefly. "Orange County Public School currently has 821 employees dedicated to ensuring students are safe and ready to learn. The Transportation Department understands the importance of delivering students to and from school safely every day. Monitoring buses during their routes ensures Orange County Public Schools and parents can track their students in real time. Our team of drivers is ready to start your students' day with a smile, a caring attitude, and a safe environment. And Justin, I just want to thank you for all of the work that you do to keep our students safe and your amazing staff that drives the buses. So, thank you. And if anyone's listening out there in the public, we are looking and accepting applications for bus drivers. In addition, the Nutrition Services Department is a team of food and nutrition professionals focused on students' health and well-being. They support learning by promoting healthy habits, lifelong nutrition, and fitness practices. As we all know, good nutrition is essential for students to focus and dramatically affects their ability to learn and retain information. I don't know if there's anyone here from Nutrition and Food Services, but again, thank you so much for all you do for our students. The Technology Team works to ensure all students have access to technologies that transform their learning experience. In a world where technology, technology is advancing at light speed, it is critical our students are educated in the safe use of technology. OCPS provides learning that includes understanding of ethical practices and digital citizenship. And I would recommend, Craig, you might want to talk to this man in the front because I think his student will be applying for a job sooner than later. And then finally, our human, not finally, just finally for tonight, Human Resources Department is responsible for recruiting, employing, and retaining highly qualified staff supporting Orange County Public Schools' vision to improve the future by empowering our students to value learning, reach their full potential, and achieve their dreams. The strategic efforts of this team has successfully placed our division in a position of strength. And Orange County Public Schools started this year, the '24-'25 school year, fully staffed. Thank you, thank you so much. That's it.
Any other comments?
Yes, I did actually have some board member comments. I did want to echo a lot of what Ms. Harrington said. Starting with the board, I have enjoyed working with each of you this far. And I feel like we are moving in an expedited motion together as a cohesive unit. So, I do appreciate that from all of you. Dr. Horneck?
Yes, ma'am.
You've done an excellent job...
Thank you.
...over the last, what, two years now?
Yes, yeah, we're, yeah, we're over two years now.
Over two years.
Yes.
It's been an amazing opportunity, and the first week has been great, even with setbacks.
Yes.
Across the district and individual schools. So, I know it's, it's a heavy burden that you carry.
Thank you.
And it's, it's very appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Justin, my friend. Oh, no!
Can you grab Justin?
Did he know, maybe that's why he left?
Justin, are you running away?
Marshall for the, for closed session.
He takes his job very seriously. Hi, Justin.
You can't leave yet, Justin.
It's, it's no surprise that I think one of the biggest issues that I had coming on as a new board member was our Transportation Department. And seeing night and day, I mean, we've got air conditioning on all the buses. We've got ability to track where students are. Even if they're on the wrong bus or wherever they're at, the parents are able to find out where they are. And it's just, it's night and day from where we were. So, I sincerely, sincerely appreciate that. I know I, that was one of the heaviest things that I was hitting on as, as a new board member. And I think that this, this district has done an amazing job. And then additionally, administration and the sheriff's office in, in the mishap that happened on the first day of school. I think that it's important to highlight the amazing resources that we have with having a SRO and, we have one at each building now, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So, having the funding to be able to do that, but also having the bodies there and then the ability to report on incidents and knowing that even if something were to happen, we have the ability to manage and take care of whatever may come our way. So, Sandy, thank you for that. And I know I echoed a lot, but I wanted to issue an individual appreciation for each and every one of you.
Thank you all.
Two quick things from me. No, Justin, it's not another shout-out for you. Renee's not here, but Renee and Ellen, I, most of you know I'm not a big social media person, but I have been contacted about the, our website and how many followers that we have, especially from the first day of school. And it's just excellent. So, I just wanted to make sure that everyone knows that we have those resources dedicated to that to continue to inform parents at some of the things that we're trying to do here and educate them and let them know that we're being, as responsive as possible. That being said, the last thing, so, my part on the Orange County Education Foundation, the Education Foundation would like to do a shred drive. And they have been doing it down in Sandy's neighborhood for the last couple of years. And they would like to bring it to Orange.
Yep.
If, it's not something that we need to vote on, but they would like to do it on a weekend and use probably Prospect's parking lot to collect, if everybody is comfortable with that, where we could pass that along and let Dan, Dr. Horneck take the reins on that one if everybody's okay with that. Yep, good, good. Well, and it's done for free, basically donations. And it all goes to scholarships for our young people in all of our schools. So, Orange County Education Foundation just does an absolute phenomenal job, phenomenal job, scholarships and helping our young people for their, their education. And that's it, thank you.
May I add on to that just real briefly? Thank you. I just wanted to share my excitement because the Lions organization that is down in Lake of the Woods, I'm a member there. And most recently, I have been appointed to be the director for our Scholarship Foundation for our students. So, I'm really excited about that. And we'll start reaching out and coordinating with other members going forward. So, thank you for reminding me because, yeah, our students deserve nothing less than the best.
Well, I will make it short and sweet. Thank you all, it was a great start. I have two children in high school now, and it went very smoothly, even getting up in the morning, so.
That's a transition.
That's a transition, for sure. So, I appreciate all your hard work. It was definitely well-done to all of you, thank you.
We're now going to join hands in a circle and sing, sing a little kumbaya, so.
All right.
Okay.
All right, we're moving on to closed session. Can I have a motion?
Is that me? I make a motion. "Public content pursuant to 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, the Orange County School Board will convene a closed meeting for the following: Discussion of Personnel or the Performance of a Division Employee as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A-1 of the Code of Virginia for resignation, termination, transfer, employment, salary adjustment, and retire, retirement of employees. Discussion of Pupil Personnel is authorized by Section 2.2-3711A-2 for early admission, waiver of compulsory attendance, out-of-county, out-of-district requests, and student discipline. Discussion or consideration of reports or plans related to the security of school division facilities or the safety of persons using school division facilities as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A-19 of the Code of Virginia, and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the school board regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A-8 of the Code of Virginia."
May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. We're in closed session.
Bring us back from closed session, sorry. We're an open meeting. Closed session is over. May I have closed session certification, please?
Yes, the board will reconvene in open session at which time the following motion will be adopted. Whereas the Orange County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and, whereas 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Orange County School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, I, only public business matters lawfully exempted, I guess that's a one, from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened or heard, discussed, or considered.
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Byram, may I have a roll call?
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Dawson?
Uh, Mrs. Harrington?
Aye.
Mrs. Quinter?
Aye.
Mr. Rickett?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the clerk certifies the vote as follows: four yes votes, no no votes, and one member absent.
Uh, deposition of personnel actions, Dr. Murray?
Yes ma'am, recommend approval of the personnel actions as presented in closed session.
That's even the bonds, yes. You have a motion?
Motion to approve personnel action, and recommend approval of the personnel agenda to include rescind, resignation, transfer, employment, and salary adjustment of staff, and extracurricular and coaching appointments.
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Uh, deposition of pupil personnel actions.
Ma'am, recommend approval of the pupil personnel actions as presented in closed session.
I move to approve the waiver of compulsory attendance based on religious exemption for cases PP 202419 through PP 2024-26.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? And certification of annual review of school division crisis plans?
I have a motion to certify that the school crisis emergen- I have a motion to certify that the school crisis emergency management and medical response plans for each school and the division have all been reviewed for the 24-25 school year.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. And if there is nothing else, we're all good. We're adjourned.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.